Like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021, and this is a Prescott City Council Voting Meeting. Thank you all for being here today. Mayor Protem, what do you have for announcements, dignitaries?
I got quite a bit. First, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you have a wonderful time with your families this weekend and just very grateful to live in Prescott and grateful to be in this community. I want to welcome former Councilman Greg LaZelle, former Councilman Jim Lamerson, Supervisors Oberg and Mallory, and fabulous former Police Chief Debbie Black. It's great to see you. On Saturday, Saturday, the 27th, is our 24th Annual Holiday Light Parade downtown at 6:00 PM. So make sure to come down and check out some great holiday lights and get in the Christmas spirit. And then lastly, Sunday, there was an excellent article about nearly 40,000 pounds of food was delivered in the area from our local LDS church, just to make sure that those who are food insecure have food for Thanksgiving holiday. So check out that if you haven't seen that already. And I think that's it, Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much. Today, we have an invocation by Reverend Dan Hurlbert of Prescott United Methodist Church. We'll have posting of the colors by members of the American Legion, and Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Protem Scholl.
I am Dan Hurlbert. I'm the pastor of Prescott United Methodist Church, celebrating our 151st year here in Prescott, and it's my pleasure to be here with you today. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, during this week of giving thanks, we gather together in this place to do just that. We thank you for the beauty of the earth, especially our hometown, which you have blessed with abundant natural wonder. We thank you for the freedoms we enjoy in this country and for those who sacrifice to make and keep us free. On this day, we thank you for our mayor and his time of service, which is coming to an end, and also those council members who have faithfully served and now graciously move off of the council. Watch over them, bless them and their loved ones. Give them the satisfaction of knowing their job has been well done. We pray for our incoming mayor, council members, and those who continue in service. Bless them by your presence in all their deliberations and guide them with your wisdom through their terms of service. Keep us mindful of Jesus, who came to serve rather than to be served, and calls his believers to follow him in the ways of love, peace, justice, and truth. Watch over our city, oh God, and her leaders. Protect our first responders in their line of duty. Bless us by your presence in this meeting and in our very lives. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the posting of the colors by members of the American Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Hartley here.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusi.
Here.
Councilman Siska.
Here.
And Councilman Tenny.
Here.
All are present.
Very good. Thank you. Presentations?
Presentation from Hinton Burdick regarding the fiscal year 2021 Audit Results and Financial Statements.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor and Council, Mark Woodfell, Budget and Finance Director. Our city charter, as well as the state statutes, require us to have an independent auditor look at our books every year and issue opinions. Also, all of our grants that we enter into, a council has us enter into, require a single audit each year. Our charter requires that we switch audit firms every three years, not that we just go out for new audit firms, but we have to change every three years. Our current audit firm is Hinton Burdick, and Steve Palmer, a partner with Hinton Burdick, is here to talk about the audit and what reports were issued. Are you there, Steve?
I'm here. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. Very good. You have the presentation ready to go, Mark?
Yes, I do.
Before we start, I just want to take a moment to thank the city for allowing us to provide these auditing services for them. And the audit is a very intense procedure. We ask a lot of questions, request a lot of documents. I just want to thank the city staff for how responsive they were to our requests and how they got us everything we needed to complete the audit in a very efficient manner. In relation to the audit, there are a number of different reports that we have to issue. In the case of the city of Prescott's audit, we issued five separate reports. As you can see on the first slide there, the first report that we issue is called the Independent Auditor Report. This is our opinion on the city's financial statements and whether or not they present fairly the city's financial position and the results of the city's operations for the fiscal year under audit. And I'm pleased to report that we issued an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. That means that, in our opinion, the statements present fairly the financial information of the city. It's a passing grade, if you will, in layman's terms. The second report that we issued is a report on the city's internal controls and on other matters of compliance as required by government audit standards. There are a few different types of findings that could potentially be issued under this report, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or compliance-related items. And I'm pleased to report that we had no findings as a result of our audit procedures that needed to be reported. The city's management should be complimented for this achievement. It's not very often that we go through an audit without any findings in that area. The third report that we issued is the report on state legal compliance. This is where we test the city's compliance with various state statutes, such as highway use of revenue funds, adopting an annual budget, and so on and so forth. And I'm pleased to report that we did not note any issues with the city's compliance with state legal requirements either. This report is on the city's compliance with the federal seagull audit. As you, as Mark mentioned a moment ago, in years where the city extends over 750,000 in federal grant monies, a federal seagull audit is required. And this year, the two major programs that we tested as part of the seagull audit were the improvements made at the airport and the capitalization grants for the water. And I'm pleased to report that, as a result of our audit procedures, we did not note any findings or there were no question costs associated with the city's compliance with federal grant monies. And the last report is each year, the city has to issue a report on their compliance with the annual expenditure limitation. Please once again to report that, in our opinion, the annual expenditure limitation report is presented in accordance with the required reporting system. So overall, the city got a passing grade on the audit. All of our reports noted no exceptions, and I'm very pleased with how it went. I'd once again like to thank, thank you for the opportunity to work with the city, and once again, thank everybody that assisted us so efficiently in completing the audit this year. And the very last slide, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take those at this time. If any questions come to mind later, there's my contact information. Please feel free to reach out to me. I'm pleased to respond to any questions or concerns at any time throughout the year.
Thanks, Stephen. Appreciate that. Any questions, comments from the council? It's a pretty boring audit report, which is what you like, right?
Yes.
Councilmember Rusi.
Oh, I would just like to thank our Budget Director, Mark, for doing such a wonderful job. Thank you.
Let's see. Councilman Tenny?
We go through an audit at the school district as well, and I know from that process that there are literally thousands and thousands of pieces of information that are checked for compliance with applicable regulations. And so the fact that there are zero audit findings in this case is just remarkable and speaks to the professionalism and care with which you and your department do your job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else, council? All right. Mark, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to proclamations.
Small Business Saturday.
Okay, they always tell me these things are short. So Councilman Blair, can you read this? I said, is it short? Well, it's not short. So who's representing Small Business Sunday or Saturday? Sherry, come on up. Come up. You bet. This is Small Business Saturday, whereas the government of Prescott, Arizona celebrates our local small businesses and contributes to our local economy and community. Whereas, according to the United States Small Administration Bureau, there's currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses that are employed in the United States and are responsible for 65.9% of new job creation from 2000 to 2017. Whereas, small business employment, 47.5% of employees in the private sector in the United States and 94% of consumers in the United States value the contributions these small businesses make in their communities. And whereas, 96% of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go small, independently owned retailers or restaurants that they have not been there before and would otherwise not have tried. Whereas, 59% of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas, Prescott, Arizona supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost the local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And now, therefore, I, Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott, Arizona, does hereby complain, uh, complain, does hereby... That's a Steve-ism for you there, Siska. Does hereby proclaim Saturday, November 27th, 2021 as Small Business Saturday and urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants of Small Business Saturday throughout the year. Sherry, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Councilman Blair, and Councilman Mayor and councilmembers. Just by a show of hands in the audience, we have many of our small businesses that are here, so if you want to show your hands, thank you. This is the heart of Prescott, our small businesses and all of our businesses, and we're just thrilled to encourage everyone to please, please shop locally, shop brick and mortar, and really support our small businesses because they help create jobs and they help support our community in so many ways. And we thank you for the proclamation as well.
And look how nice that is.
That is.
And shop local. Olson's Gray.
We're going to present a proclamation here on the 80th anniversary of the Pearl Harbor. And accepting this today will be one of our long, long, long-term veterans, Ed Perry, who just turned 100 years old about three weeks ago. Now, Ed has actually enlisted in the Army prior to Pearl Harbor. He was serving in various places throughout the, throughout the country, actually, prior to that attack. And one of the things that I really appreciated about Ed is he's spent so much time in these council chambers, observing the council operations, and we could always rely on him to be sitting in that row, keeping an eye on us. So I'll proceed with this. Whereas, on December 7th, 1941, Imperial Japanese forces attacked the United States Naval Base at Pearl Harbor, Hawaii, leading to the US entry into World War II. And whereas President Franklin Roosevelt stated that this state will live in infamy. And whereas, more than 2,400 American lives were lost in this devastating attack. And whereas, it is right that we honor those who showed tremendous courage and sacrifice in defense of American independence, freedom, and liberty that our nation is founded on. And whereas, in order to honor the memory of the thousands of lives lost during the Pearl Harbor attack, we must ensure that future generations possess an understanding of the steadfast duty to country demonstrated by these men and women. And whereas, this and future generations need to be constantly vigilant and maintain a strong military defense and readiness in order to assure peace through strength. And whereas, December 7th, 2021 marks the 80th anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor and serves as an opportunity for us to recognize, acknowledge, and honor those members of our military that provide the vigilance and readiness needed to maintain peace, as we remember those who lost their lives 80 years ago, ensuring that their memory lives on. Now, therefore, Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott, on behalf of the Prescott City Council, does hereby proclaim December 7th, 2021 as Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. Thank you, sir.
It's a great honor to accept this on behalf of all those many people who remember Pearl Harbor. Thank you, Pastor.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you all for your putting up with me up here.
Let's move on to Consent Agenda. Are there any items that any member would like to pull from the consent agenda today? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through 8F.
Second. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Councilman Blair.
I'm a little slow.
Pass is 7-0.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on to Item 9A, please.
Adoption of Resolution Number 2021-1803, authorizing the signing of the city's decision and order modification application by City Manager Michael Lamar and submittal to the Arizona Department of Water Resources.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Council, Craig Dotseth, Public Works. This item is to seek approval of the adoption of the resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the ADWR DNO application. This is the third part of the DNO update process being brought to you. First part was a 60-minute presentation, discussion, and questions on October 26th, which included information on the application deadline and schedule, application requirements, draft demand estimates, draft physical supply analysis, consistency with management plan, and consistency with management goal. Part two of the presentation, on November 9th, continued with 40 minutes of presentation, discussion, and questions, which included information on the application requirements, review of the final demand estimates, introduction to the ADWR Assured Water Supply, physical availability requirement, draft physical supply analysis, and next steps. Today's resolution approval, as required by the ADWR, Arizona Department of Water Resources, will allow Public Works to meet the deadline to submit the application prior to the end of December. By no means does this mean that the process is even close to being finished. It's just the application and the beginning of the review process by ADWR. The new council will be very involved throughout the following year as the review comments and discussions progress forward. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Very good. Thanks, Craig. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to mention the fact that this whole process of moving through the decision and order calendar and getting it to this point took a lot of work, a lot of analysis, and it's important that we proceed with this and be able to get this decision and order enacted so that our future ability to manage our water portfolio will remain in the authority and the hands of the city. So I want to thank you and the other staff members that have worked on this, and it's very fortunate that we have the skill and experience to be able to apply for this decision and order for our continuing authority as an assured water supplier. So thank you very much, Craig.
Thank you, and I'll pass that on.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-1803.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Pass is 7-0.
Item 9B, please.
Approval of City Contract Number 2019-161A4, an amendment to City Contract Number 2019-161 with Fan Environmental and Fan Contracting Joint Venture for Guaranteed Maximum Price Number Four to construct the intermediate pump station water storage tanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eric Bay with Public Works. This next item before you is a portion of the overall water production facility and intermediate pump station project that I've presented on several times before. And before I start on this specific topic, I want to give you a quick update of where we're at with the overall project and the steps we've taken to get to this point. So the water production facility is now under construction. The underground is almost complete, and our contractor, once complete with the underground, is going to start going vertical with the booster pump station. So we're very excited to see the next step of that piece of the project go forward. We've brought to council a land swap item for the intermediate site, where we worked with the developer of Deepwell Ranch. They requested that we move our station a little bit farther to the west, and we agreed so we got a new parcel over what was originally contemplated. We brought an easement relocation to council. We had transmission main easements that went through what is now the middle of the Trinity School, and we were able to coordinate with the developer to get those easements relocated so that our future water lines didn't go through an existing school site. We've also brought to council a state land acquisition because a portion of the water main did go through an area of state land, and that was something that needed to be acquired for the project. Additionally, the GMP for Phase One Off-Site Water Mains has now been constructed. It is energized, and I'm happy to say that it is feeding our first customer off of the water pressure zone 110. The GMP for Phase Two Off-Site Water Main constructions has now been mostly complete, and we're actually just waiting for a couple more valves to show up because they have some long lead times. But as soon as those valves arrive here in Prescott, we will get that project complete as well, that portion of the project. Finally, the intermediate pump station site itself. Design is now 100% complete, so we're using that 100% design to develop the GMPs to construct that site. And that brings me to the item that I'm bringing before you today. We have the first GMP for the intermediate pump station site, and the first GMP is going to be for the tank portion of this site. And it's common during these larger CMAR projects to break it down into several GMPs so that construction can start and/or progress while the remaining details of a site are still waiting to be finalized. The reason that we broke the tanks out, the two 6-million-gallon pre-stress concrete tanks at this location, is because most of the work is being performed by a major subcontractor, and that subcontractor is DN Tank. So by expediting this GMP, we are basically getting this subcontractor the ability to get this project on their schedule and get it moving while the remaining details of the project are being finalized. So DN Tank themselves, they're a leader in the industry, and they were selected through their own competitive and qualification submittal during the design process. They actually identified this project all the way to the top of their company as a priority project for them, so we got a very complete, a very professional, and a very competitive bid for these two tanks. So the city is very excited to have DN Tank onboard as our tank manufacturer. The cost of this GMP that we're approving today is a part of the overall projected budget for the intermediate pump station site. This is just the first GMP. We are anticipating two additional ones, with the next one coming very shortly, and that will be for the procurement of the long lead time items, the equipment and the material that may take a long time to get to Prescott. And the reason that we're expediting that one is because of the current marketplace The final GMP that we bring to council will be to construct everything, to install the materials, to put together the equipment, build the booster station, install the generators, do the site work, and all the appurtenances that go with the intermediate site. So city staff has evaluated and negotiated the GMP with our general CMAR. The CMAR was selected back in 2019 via a qualifications-based process, and that, of course, is the Fan Environmental Fan Contracting Joint Venture. The GMP has been deemed responsive and balanced. City is recommending award at this time, and with that, I'll take any questions about this project.
Thank you, Eric. Good presentation. You know, people don't probably realize how complex our water system is here in Prescott, probably one of the most complex systems in the country because of the, where you start getting the water and then all the different topo changes throughout... topo changes throughout the city to make sure you have the right pressure where you need it and the redundancy. And Craig and Eric, and you guys, you do a tremendous job, so thank you for staying on top of this. Honorable Councilman Blair.
Yeah. GMT, what does that stand for?
So GMP is the Guaranteed Maximum Price. It's a vehicle that's used during a CMAR method of procurement to give the city a price to procure to build a certain portion of the project.
I recognize that, but I don't think the public understands the acronym of GMT. And also, the concrete tanks that you're talking about, where are those going to be located?
Yes, I do have a map here. Let me bring that up.
And while you're doing that, Eric, I think it's important that the public know over the past many years what Public Works has done to ensure our water productivity and upsizing of all the tanks that we have put in place and the value and the amount of money that we have spent for public safety when it comes to water.
Absolutely. So let me start with location. This map, as you can see, is kind of bounded by Pioneer Parkway here to the south and then State Route 89 over here to the east. And the intermediate pump station site, this is the one that we acquired during the land swap with our developer, is about one mile west of Willow Creek Road, which is right here on the Warrior Way alignment.
So does that sit on the 36-inch pipeline, then?
Yes, it does. The cut for the 36 and 18, there are two transmission mains, in this alignment can still be seen on the aerial, and our operations staff do drive that to ensure that there's nothing wrong with our transmission mains on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Would you like me to expand on some of the...
Quickly, I know that most people aren't here to listen to boring stuff like this, but I do think it's important to know that we've doubled the size of our water production capabilities.
Yeah, absolutely. So over the last several years, we've done everything from replacing and upsizing tanks, replacing and upsizing booster stations, drilling new wells, and this is all in an effort to increase the reliability and the redundancy of our water system. This portion of this project specifically, the intermediate pump station site, gives the city water operations staff an ability to use water from multiple production zones to feed the entire city, which up until recently, we've only had on a very limited basis through one interconnect booster pump station. Additionally, water can be backfed to different areas of the city that goes through this site, so the wells we've installed, plus the existing wells out in Chino, now really maximize their potential with the reliability they can provide to the system as a whole and our ability to keep the water taps flowing.
So we're good hands with eBay?
Doing my best.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. As a well-managed and well-planned municipality, it's important that we keep up with our infrastructure, and I want to thank you very much for that. But I have a few questions about costs. This is a big-ticket item. You're asking for 11.5 million, and this is just part of a total cost of 30 million, and how is this going to be financed? Where are we getting the funding?
So City of Prescott Water Operations has a unique opportunity to use WIFA funding to fund the majority of this project. The specifics of the WIFA loan, if you're interested in hearing them, can be provided by our finance director, Mr. Woodfill, but I can tell you from my side, it's a very low-cost debt service way of funding these projects that will eventually be recouped with our rate and fees.
Yes, Councilwoman Mark Woodfill, Budget Finance Director. Yeah, this was a 30-year WIFA loan that we did through their drinking water program, so 30-year term, and it was at a 1.59% interest rate. Of course, the WIFA loans are subsidized by EPA grants and those type of things, so you may have noticed earlier through the riveting conversation about audit reports. On the single audit report, WIFA is actually one of our major programs because we do receive so much subsidy through them.
Thank you. And then I have another question. This water upgrade is, I've heard it been called the backbone, is going to be the backbone of our system, and part of it is to serve traditional Prescott and part of it is to serve Deepwell Ranch, and I would like to know how much of our developer impact fees are covering this? How much is Deepwell Ranch going to be responsible for?
Yes, absolutely. So these tanks that we are going to construct with this GMP, the water in these tanks have the ability to be served to every single service account that the City of Prescott owns within City of Prescott proper. To do that, part of the reliability that I mentioned, most of the water will serve South Prescott, traditional Prescott. We do have PRVs in place to, if we needed to backfill a production zone like Zone 12, for instance, we could potentially do that. Also at this site, we are building a Zone 110 booster pump station, so there will be two different pressure zones coming out of this same site. And Zone 110 has the ability to serve quite a significant area of the deep well area. The accounts that will not be served from water going through these tanks are the limited number of accounts that we do still serve out in Chino Valley.
And are there any development impact fees that are going to go towards this expenditure?
Yes, absolutely. And since a large portion of this project is serving existing infrastructure, we have a 50-50 split that has been set up where 50% of the project is going to be funded by developer impact fees, and then 50% of the project will be funded by rates and fees from existing counts.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Oh, did you fill out a comment card? Then you can come up to the podium if you'd like to. You have three minutes.
My name is Stephen Cook. I'm a resident of Prescott. As you all know, we pull water something like 440 feet out of the little Chino aquifer, you know, and then up into those tanks. Takes a lot of electrical energy. Past calculations suggest that using photovoltaic solar electricity could save the city over a 20-year period, somewhere $1 to $2 million, something like that. So my question and hope is that the Public Works Department will continue its investigation of this possibility. There's been some interest on the council in doing that, so I'm hoping that Craig and the rest of you will pursue that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
All right, with no other public comment, you don't see anything. Sarah?
I don't have anything, no, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number two zero one nine dash one six one A four.
Second. Have a motion, second. Please vote.
Pass is seven zero.
All right, and item nine C, please.
Approval of city contract number two zero two two dash zero six two with Fan Contracting for the Lower Goldwater Lake Improvement Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Michelle Stacy Schroeder, Recreation Services Manager. This project is to improve and enhance the Lower Goldwater Lake for public use. It will include additional parking, a Ramada day-use areas, the restroom, and improved vehicle-access road. The design phase was approved in 2019 by this council. At that time, we were set to move forward with the bidding process. However, COVID had other plans for us, so the project was shelved. In October of this year, on the 10th and the 17th, we advertised for bids. The city received two bids on November 4th, asphalt paving and supply and fan contracting. Fan contracting came in with the amount of $1,596,049.25. The original budget for this project was approved for the fiscal year 2022 budget at $1,420,000. As you can see, the bid did come in over budget. That budget was set on 2020 cost calculations. We did go to the Tourism Advisory Committee on November 10th, and they have approved additional funding up to $300,000 to finish this budgeted project. If approved by council, it's our hope that we can start construction soon and have the project finished by April 1st of 2022. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Michelle. You did a great job on the Veterans Day Parade, by the way. Thank you so much for your work on that.
Thank you.
So what you're saying is you're opening up my secret fishing hole down there?
Yes, it will be open for fishing. We will not be opening it up for boating. We want to keep a light foot on the land and keep it pristine and enjoyable for generations to come, so it will be open for fishing and day use, but we will not allow for any boating or kayaking.
Duck hunting.
Maybe. Actually, we are looking at catch and release.
Well, I think...
Can't catch and release ducks, though. I've never seen that happen quite yet.
Well, you know, given the popularity of all our lakes, particularly Upper Goldwater, it's important to continue to expand our recreation opportunities, and this is a real jewel down there. I know it's been a long process that you and Joe and others have been involved with, and it's a beautiful, beautiful area. I know people are going to love it down there. I like the fact that you're being kind of lighter on the land, as you say, down there, not as intensive maybe as Upper or some of our other lakes, which I think is appropriate. So, great job on this, Michelle. Questions, comments from the council? We'll go to Councilman Tenney.
I just want to piggyback on what Mayor Mangrelly is saying. Thank you so much for you and all the folks at Parks and Rec and other departments in the city that have gotten this going, and we've been really enthusiastic about the reports that we've received so far. It'll be awesome to have another kind of gem in our crown, so to speak, in terms of recreational opportunities here in Prescott. I really like the light touch on the land piece as well. The hiking opportunities and fishing opportunities, birding opportunities, things like that will be excellent here. I moved down in 83, and it was years before I even knew there was a Lower Goldwater Lake, and asked for years, "How come we don't use that?" And those questions have been asked and answered, so I won't go over that here, but I'm just really excited about this. I appreciate that. I do have a question that maybe some others in the room have as well. We had a budgeted amount, like you mentioned, from over a year ago, and now we've come in a little bit over that. I wonder if you have this knowledge in your head, super, speak to it. If not, maybe we might hear from finance or Public Works or another department that could speak to it better, but could you tell us kind of in broad terms how the amount for the bids, the discrepancy, the difference between that and budgeted amount, how that compares to other projects that we've seen recently? It's my understanding that a lot of things are budgeted. The price of materials and construction has gone up tremendously in the last year and a half, et cetera. This seems like it's well within that range that we've been told about, but maybe you can speak to that.
Right. So the big part of it is the Ramada. The cost of steel has increased, and then the supply chain issues that everyone's having. It's really increased the price of a lot of things, and so we had to take into account for that. Lead times on resources and materials, it's all playing a part in why things are going up in cost.
Sure. So for a private entity, if we're Prescott or if we're Houston, Texas, or wherever, we're facing the same kind of thing. But again, this seems fairly reasonable to me in terms of the amount over our initial estimate from back when materials costs and construction costs were lower about a year and a half ago.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that.
And Councilman Tenney, just as a follow-up, one interesting thing that's happened even in this COVID pandemic is our tourism tax or our bed tax has actually gone up precipitously. So taking advantage of unrestricted fund balance in the tourism account, for lack of a better term, seems like a good way to make up the difference at this point.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I'd just like to make the comment that as we grow in population, that it's very important that we keep up with our amenities, our recreational amenities, and our parks and open space. Thank you.
And Councilman Sishka.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a short comment. If you haven't been down to the lower lake, you need to go. It's a beautiful lake. It's a totally different ecosystem, as far as I'm concerned, than the one on the upper lake. So if you get a chance to hike around the lake and hike down under the dam and up onto the other side, do it because it's a great, great hike.
Very good. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, entertain a motion. Councilman Blair, would you be willing to make this motion for us today?
I can't. I already turned mine off. I'm already checked out.
No, no, you're...
Sorry about that. I move to approve city contract number two zero two two dash zero six two.
Second. Have a motion, second. Please vote.
Pass is seven zero.
All right, very good. All right, let's move on to item 10, please.
Presentation to outgoing members of council. Councilman Sishka?
You know, this is hard. We've got some outstanding people who gave a lot of years to this community, and so while I'm not happy to see them go, I'm very happy for them that they can move on in their lives. And so the first person that I would like to have come down here is our Mayor Pro Tem, Alexa Sholl. You know, folks, when I was a much younger man, there was an investment company called EF Hutton, and the slogan for EF Hutton was, "When EF Hutton talks, people listen." And one of the beautiful things about Councilwoman Sholl was that she didn't speak very often, like some of the council members that I have worked with. And when she spoke, she got to the point and made a great point. She was outstanding, and people listened. So Mayor Pro Tem, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
And please have some words.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for being here this afternoon. I'm really proud of this council's accomplishments the past four years, despite nearly two of the years being a pandemic. We expanded our airport, building a brand-new terminal in less than four years. We constructed the Hilton Garden Inn in a wonderful private-public partnership. We purchased and acquired a new city hall. We finished our annexation with Arizona Eco Development, securing nearly 475 acres of beautiful public open space, and much more. And personally, I'm really proud of the addition of a youth advisory board to the City of Prescott. It was long overdue, as many other municipalities across the state have had youth advisory boards for years. Thank you very much, from the bottom of my heart, to the voters of Prescott for allowing me the opportunity to serve. Thank you to my family for their support during my campaign and during my tenure as councilwoman. And thank you especially to our city staff. Your professionalism, expertise, and service to Prescott has continued to blow me away, and I will miss you, miss you much. My message is the same as it was when I ran. I hope young people know that they can be involved in politics and government. Being young is not a burden, it's an asset. The millennial and Gen Z generations will be the ones to deal with the consequences, both good and bad, of policy enacted today, so we should fight for a seat at the table. Thank you, and have a wonderful holiday season.
And Mayor Pro Tem Sholl, on behalf of a thankful city, we appreciate you, and we'd like to give you this token of our... we appreciate you, and we'd like to give you this token of our esteem.
Thank you, Steve.
So Blair, come on down. Well, I'll tell you what, I'm going to miss the Blairisms. You know, Blair is my cellmate back at the offices here at the city. And I've really, really enjoyed the conversations with him because, you know, you have to pay attention to the past in order to not make the mistakes of the past. And Blair has 20 years on council. And he not only has 20 years on council, but several years on planning and zoning and several years on the Recreation Services Board. So we are going to miss this institutional knowledge. We're going to miss your sense of humor. Thank you so, so, so much.
You can bring a bucket up here for me. That'd be good. Not much to say, I just hope I live as long as Ed Perry.
As a token of the city's esteem. Thank you, Steve.
A box of donuts.
That's what it looks like.
And last, but certainly not least, Mayor Greg Mangarelli. You know, I don't know who said this, but I'm going to borrow a quote. And it's that great leaders don't set out to be great leaders. They set out to make a difference. And I have never, ever seen a more engaged, more active mayor than Greg Mangarelli. And thank you so, so, so much.
Well, thank you all for being here, and what a privilege and honor it's been to serve the city these last four years. You know, many times you hear me talk about God, family, country, and that's kind of my outline today. I want to thank God for the opportunity. He put me in this chair, and he gave me the strength and the courage to serve these last four years through some difficult times, honestly. And I want to thank my wife, Sheila, and our kids for all their support. Could not do what I did without an incredibly strong woman by my side. So thank you. You know, Mayor Pro Tem mentioned a lot of the accomplishments. I think history will judge us very well on all the things that we were able to accomplish. Very proud of what we're able to do in four years. Want to thank the council and your partnership. We have the best city manager in the country in Michael Lamar. Michael, thank you so much for your leadership, your innovation. It's been a real pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Sarah Syip and Matt Podraki, you guys are awesome. Thank you so much for your work. You're great professionals. You do tremendous work for the city. You know, really, the most important people are the 500 employees that we have that work for the city. You know, many times I'm out front, and I get to hear the accolades and the thanks, but it doesn't happen without our city staff. These people are tremendous. They love their city. They're almost as passionate as Steve Blair about their city. And I've had so many fun times riding around with police and fire and with our folks in Public Works on the trash trucks. And what a, just to get behind the scenes and riding a snowplow was some of my best memories. It's what I'm going to miss the most is the people. And that's really what makes our city great, is the people that serve us every day. So I just want to say thank you to each and every city employee for your dedication, your perseverance, your passion for your city. It really shows, and it was a highlight for me to work with you and get to know you. So thank you all so much for your support these last four years. Appreciate it.
Folks, this will never be able to express our total love for Greg Mangarelli, but it's a little something. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it.
All right, I'd like to invite Councilman Good up so I can officially hand you the gavel here. Get a little photo op.
Swearing in of newly elected members of the Prescott City Council, and we will start with Mayor Phil Good.
Want to come up here earlier?
Yeah.
Maybe.
First of all, let me say that I consider it a great honor and privilege to be here today to swear in the next mayor for the city of Prescott, Phil Good. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Phil Good.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
According to, according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Well, I guess you're expecting me to say a few words. So if you know anything about me, you'll probably know that I try to keep it as brief as possible. But I do want to particularly thank the voters of the city who put their faith in me to lead this city in a new direction, to restore some faith and transparency in our government, to make sure that our taxpayers are properly protected, that our future will be managed in an efficient way that will restore the beautiful city that we've always, that we've all come here to love, for whatever reasons. We want to make sure that we include the public, that we listen to the public. We consider their concerns as we make policy moving forward. We have big challenges here. We're growing in a very, very rapid way. And I think everybody who watched the election knew that we have the ability to manage our future in a reasonable, conservative way that won't overwhelm our public resources, and I certainly intend to do that. I specifically want to thank all the people that contributed to the campaign, that worked on my campaign, particularly my wife putting up with me for all those months, having to deal with all the issues. And then when I come home, I got to repeat it all to her. But it was a, it's a very humbling experience. And I know a number of us who ran on similar issues in this campaign to restore public trust, to listen to our community, to create a call to the public so that we can hear you, and to make sure that we manage our water portfolio so that our growth doesn't overwhelm our resources, to make sure that we honor our veterans and our first responders and our public safety officers. Our fire and police know that they have the backing of this council, and they have the support of our community. It's extremely important. So I can't thank you all enough. And I certainly will do my very best to live up to the faith that you've put in me. So thank you, and I look forward to leading the city for as long as you'll allow me. Thank you.
Next, we will have Councilwoman Jessica Hall take her oath of office.
I suppose I should move.
You probably should move.
Hammer. Do you want to go this way?
That's good.
All right.
Yeah.
How are you? Good, good, good. So will you raise your right hand? All right. I'll try to say this in chunks. All right. I state your name.
I, Jessica Hall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of councilwoman.
Discharge the duties of councilwoman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, Steve.
Yes.
Nice.
Hi, Kathy, how are you?
Did you want to speak at all, Councilwoman? Or shall I call up the next council member?
Yeah, I didn't prepare. I'm Jessica Hall, and I'm running for city council. You want to give, everybody knows each other's speeches by now, right? No, I'm very excited to be here, and I'm excited to serve the citizens of Prescott. And I really appreciate my family's support. This campaigning is not very simple. And it was something I'm really proud to have been through, and I couldn't have done it, though, without my parents, my husband, my boys getting dressed up and coming to functions and listening to my speeches and all of that. So I am excited to be here, and I'm excited to serve. And I appreciate everyone putting a little bit of faith in this, in this brand-new, very new council that we have. And I just would like to say thank you to Councilwoman, or Mayor Pro Tem, Alexa Scholl. She was very supportive and helpful. And same goes for our mayor and Councilwoman Steve Blair. It's not easy, especially, you know, when you've, when you've been in a seat for 20 years, you know, or four years, to sort of hand over the reins. And everybody was very, very helpful and supportive. And I don't think you find that everywhere. I think that's something special to Prescott. So thank you. Thank you for having me here, and I appreciate it.
And next, we will have Councilman Montoya take his oath of office.
Sorry. Read it off?
Yeah.
Okay. I, Brandon Montoya.
I, Brandon Montoya.
Do solemn- I'm not going to say anything.
Supposed to say.
I, Brandon Montoya.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will-
Support and defend.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of councilwoman.
And that I will faithfully-
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of councilwoman. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So.
So help me God. Is this? I think it's on. Okay. Thank you, everyone. I want to thank my wife and my children for their endless support. As Jessica said, it's not easy. And I want to thank everyone who supported my campaign and who believed in the message that I had. And I am excited to serve my community, so thank you.
And now we will have Councilman Moore take his oath of office.
I state your name.
I, Eric Mitchell Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of councilwoman.
The duties of councilwoman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
It's a great honor to stand here today. I feel humbled and privileged to serve on your city council and to be a public servant and to represent you and to listen to you. I will do my very best. You know that I will be honest and ethical. That is a trademark of who I am. If you know me, you know that I am honest and ethical. And I know there will be very difficult decisions to make, some that are coming up very soon. And sometimes the decisions that I make or we make will not be popular. And it's not going to be easy, and I think you know that. But I hope that you know that I will make the very best decisions that I can for the best of the city, for the best of the citizens of the city. I appreciate the opportunity to serve you. I also want to state that in my onboarding process, I've had the privilege and opportunity to meet with department heads of all of the different departments in the city. And I am so impressed with the staff of the city. I appreciate Michael Lamar and all the department heads I've met with. I think we are very fortunate and very blessed in this community to have a wonderful city staff. And I look forward to working with them. I look forward to working with our mayor and council. Thank you very much.
Well, I guess I'm calling this new council to order. It's a pleasure to announce the new council members and our new organization. So we can start with roll call.
We can. Mayor Good?
Present.
Councilwoman Hall?
Present.
Councilman Montoya?
Present.
Councilman Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Still here.
All are present.
Thank you. Our first order of business will be to appoint Mayor Pro Tem. So I would like to remind not only the council but the public of what this position means. According to our city charter, the Mayor Pro Tem shall perform the duties of the mayor during his absence or disability. So we will be nominating and voting on a Mayor Pro Tem at this time. This will be a one-year appointment. And it's my intention to rotate this responsibility as members of the council gain knowledge and experience. So that's what the expectation is for this position. So with that, I would like to make a motion to nominate Kathy Rusing to be the Mayor Pro Tem.
I would like to second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
I will do a roll call vote, Mayor, since we don't have the board switched over.
Our lights are
So I will
Creating, so we will
I'll go in alphabetical order, and after I call your name, you can just state aye or no. Councilwoman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Rusing.
Aye.
Councilman Sishka.
No.
Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
And Mayor Good.
Yes.
Passes 6-1.
The next order of business, 14B, is appointment of members of the Council Subcommittee on Water Issues. This is a two-year appointment for three members of our council to sit on the Committee on Water Issues and determine how water service agreements and other necessary water policies and decisions are made. So I would like to start off by making a motion. Are we gonna do this as a group or individually?
We can do it as a group, if you'd like to do it that way, or we can do it individually. It's your choice.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Steve Shishka, Councilman Steve Shishka, Council Mayor Pro Tem, Kathy Rusing, and Councilman Brandon Montoya to sit on the Water Issues Subcommittee for a two-year term.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilwoman Hall. Yay. Councilman Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Rusing.
Aye.
Councilman Sishka.
Yes.
Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
And Mayor Good.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Well, thank you all. This will conclude the agenda items on this new meeting of our new city council. I would like to close this meeting with with a quote from Thomas Jefferson. Happens to be in a copy of the Constitution. I carry with me always. "We in America do not have a government by the majority. We have a government by the majority who participate." So I want to make sure that the public understands that we have an obligation as citizens to be involved, to get involved, to participate, to volunteer, to monitor and hold our representatives accountable, both here in the city and in the state and in the nation. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.